For our weekly city council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
We'd be delighted to. Thank you, Councilor Baker. Councilor Campbell. Councilor Siomo. Councilor Asabi George. Councilor Flaherty. Councilor Jackson. Councilor Lamatina. Councilor Linehan. Councilor McCarthy. Councilor O'Malley. Councilor Presley. Councilor Wu. And Councilor Zachem. Yeah, the president.
Thank you. I'd like to ask all councilors and guests to please rise today. I have the pleasure of introducing our faith leader to deliver today's invocation. I am pleased to welcome back Imam Mohammed Barry, who is a community activist and religious leader for the Sierra Leonean community in Massachusetts. He has worked extremely hard and represents, in his congregation, has residents across the city, primarily from Matapan, Hyde Park, Roxbury, but all of our neighborhoods, and the church meets in Roxbury. Imam Barry is married to his beautiful wife, Jalahan Susay Barry, and blessed with five children, four boys and one girl. He's been active in many, many different fields, from politics to business, but I know him as an outstanding community leader and proud to have him back here with us today.
My apologies for being a little bit late due to traffic. So, Madam President, Michelle Wu, honorable councilors, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, I am honored to appear before this august body and very pleased to invoke the name of the Almighty God to grant you wisdom, to grant you wisdom to discharge your duties judiciously and honestly with a sense of welfare and true needs of our people, to give you confidence in what is good and fitting, with the ability to work together harmoniously during honest disagreement. May you always have the best interests of the people of Boston in your heart. May God bless this city as it is the bastion of democracy, the bastion of freedom, the beginning of the United States, and also bless these United States of America. I will end by reciting the Lord's Prayer in Islam and ask Allah for, in this holy month of Ramadan, to bless you all and bless all of us. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillahi rabbil 'alameen. Arrahmanirrahim. Maliki yow midin. Iyyaka na'budu wa iyyaka nastain. Ehdenas sira'tal mustaqim. Sira'tal lazina an'amta alaihim. Gairil mahdubi alaihim walad daliin. Amin. Thank you. Thank you.
And now if everyone could join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Imam Barry. We have two special presentations before the start of official business, and the first one will be delivered by Councilor Jackson.
Thank you, Council President Wu. I am excited to be here today. We are in the presence of greatness right now. I want to give a shout out to a friend of mine who is also award-winning. I want to give a shout out to Don West, who is an award-winning photographer. But today, we are here to acknowledge someone I didn't know I had as much in common with. As in doing some research, I found out a couple of things about the voice that we all know, the coolest voice that we all know, the best-dressed voice that we all know, and the warmest heart that we all know, our friend Jose Masso, who is a Massachusetts broadcaster, Hall of Fame winner. And we are here, interestingly, to celebrate some 42s. We are here to celebrate the 42nd anniversary of his show, Consalsa, and I pulled it up offline, and I have his bio, and it says, "Few announcers," actually, I'm a little stressed about reading this because he is a broadcaster, so hopefully I'll do a good job. Few announcers have more credibility with the Spanish-speaking audience, and I would note English-speaking audience than WBUR's Jose Masso. During his long career in radio, he has been a trusted friend to the Latino and Latina residents of Boston, as well as listeners in Lowell and the Pittsburgh area. And because his program is bilingual, he has also introduced Latin music and culture to the wider audience. Raised in old San Juan, Puerto Rico, a graduate of Antioch College, Jose came to Boston in 1973 and taught bilingual classes in the Boston Public Schools. He is a Boston Public School teacher, and we have all been educated by the work that he has done. Before being hired by Governor Michael Dukakis as a liaison to the Hispanic community, he has also been a member of Boston Mayor Thomas Menino's Office of Cultural Affairs. It was his students who encouraged Jose to get into broadcasting. So, in being a great teacher, we know that great teachers actually listen to their students. There were few Latin music programs on air in the 1970s, so he auditioned at WBUR FM, and on June 22, 1975, Consalsa made its debut. His groundbreaking program became so popular that earlier this year, actually, Masso celebrated 35 years on air, this is a little dated, but I will note, while his program is known for its wide variety of music, he also engages listeners in conversation about issues that affect the community, and he is not afraid to take a stand. And he is not afraid to take a stand. The versatile Masso has also spent 15 years doing television, beginning as host of the Emmy Award-winning bilingual public affairs program on WCVB, and later as host of The Plaza on WGBH-TV. I bring to you our friend Jose Masso, and I also note his beautiful wife, Davina, who they have also been married for 42 years. Come on up. And I will also note, one of the things that I actually am speaking to my mom about this last night, I realized that, as many of you know, that I was adopted when I was two months old, and I was born in April. And interestingly, within days of you starting your show was the actual adoption that occurred for me. So, in some ways, Consalsa, which I sometimes listen to late, late at night, gave me life and gives so many people life in the city of Boston. I give you Jose Masso.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. I'll make this brief because we have business to attend to. First and foremost, let me thank Councilor Tito Jackson for this recognition. I also want to thank all of you for the great work that you do on behalf of all the citizens and residents of the city of Boston. I know that it's the work that you do because of the passion that you bring every single day to this chamber and also to your respective offices and when you're out in the communities. So, I thank you as a citizen and a resident of this city. I want to thank our city councilor, I'm a member of the Hyde Park community, been there now for, since 1978, and he's someone who does justice to all of us who live there. And I just want to take a minute very quickly. You know, doing radio, being an educator, I always will see myself as using every platform I can have to educate and inform, and the purpose of the program was just to be a bridge between communities, between cultures, that's why it's in English, that's why it's in Spanish. It was a program that I wanted really to emphasize the link between the diaspora, especially those from Latin American countries, the Caribbean, Spanish-speaking communities, but it's Afro-Latin music, which I share, and I do that purposely because our communities are so rich in history and in traditions and the music that we bring to this continent. But that being said, I also want to acknowledge one very special person, who's this woman here, and I get emotional because she's my wife, right? But I do so because she makes it possible every weekend for me to share music with you and share time. She sacrifices. Think about that. Every weekend, I'm on the air, I'm not with her, and she says, "Do your thing. I support your passion." And she's been doing it for 42 years. How blessed I am, blessed to have a beautiful family, to be healthy, to have her as my wife, the mother of my children, the grandmother of my grandchildren, and a friend, and also someone who inspires me when I do my show every weekend. So, I just want to take this moment and thank you, Michelle. Thank you, wish you the very best, and the birth of you child, and thank you very much, my brother. I appreciate this. It's an honor. I'm humbled. I'm humbled.
I want to, we did something a little new. For 42 years, you deserve some extra seasoning and spices when it comes to what we do with the resolution. And I do want to note, the reason why Boston is a unique city is that the Afro-Latino community in Boston is together, unlike many cities across the state, across the United States, and you have been a large part of that. And so, today, we have an official resolution, and it reads, "Be it resolved that the Boston City Council extends its congratulations to Jose Masso in recognition of the 42nd anniversary of Consalsa, which has aired on WBUR since June 22, 1975, and providing Boston with a spark of Latin culture through your community engagement. Be it further resolved that the Boston City Council temporarily renames Massachusetts Avenue as Masso-Chucis Avenue, and renames Soldiers Field Road as Salsa Field Road, and declares Jose Masso Day on June 22, 2017. It is your day, and it is your street. You can drive as fast as you want on Massachusetts Avenue."
I love thinking.
We can only do it, yeah, we can only, when you get to Cambridge, we can't help you anymore. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you. You want me to move a little bit this way?
Thank you.
We're good? You tell us. Don, you want somebody up here? Yep. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. Have a good afternoon. Oh, one more? Somebody else? I apologize. You got everybody?
Everybody good? Okay. Call the staff.
Yeah, I'll be, yeah, I want to make sure everybody, got you. Got it. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
One more very special presentation before we dive in. I'd like to ask Council O'Malley up.
Thank you, ma'am. Hi, Claire. Do you guys see Mom here? Oh, okay. You checked the boat over by yourself? So, for some students, today is the first day of summer, not Boston Public School students, but to my friends Kalida and Claire, today is their first full day of summer, and they are spending it lobbying their city councilors, their lawmakers, and they've also brought us a wonderful gift. Some of you may remember Kalida, she participated in a terrific working session that Council President Wu and I had on our plastic bag ordinance. She sat right with us at the table and was a very powerful, insightful voice. And many of you know Claire as well. Claire's mom, Ann Walsh, worked many years for former Councilor John Conley. And Kalida is from Fields Corner, Claire is from Lower Mills. Kalida's a member of the Girl Scouts, which troop number? Do you know? The Girl, the Dorchester Girl Scouts, and she feels very, very strongly about the importance of having reusable bags. And so, she actually, they both made gifts for each and every one of us. As you know, lobbying laws prohibit us from receiving a gift that costs more than $50. I think this is worth a million dollars because it was made by some really wonderful young women. Special thanks to the Stitch House and Councilor Asabi George, who led the space for a Sew-a-thon for the Girl Scouts. But Kalida and Claire are just really two wonderful young ladies who feel very passionately about the importance of standing up for the environment. So, I wanted to just ask, did you guys want to say something while you're here, or even just a quick hello? Why don't you talk about what you brought for all of us, and you'll be distributing.
So, we brought some bags for you, reusable bags that you can use when you're shopping, when you're doing anything, and then we put a little card in there that you can...
Anything to add, Claire? All right. So, let's hear it for Kalida and Claire. They're going to be, they're going to be passing out the gifts for all of us lately, but I was wondering if we could do a quick picture with Kalida and Claire? And Mom as well? You guys get right up here, okay? You want to, you hold the gavel.
Yes, you hold the gavel.
How many bags did you make? How many are you making?
Like a thousand.
A thousand?
Yeah.
Do you guys want to give out the bags now, or you want to wait till after?
Wait, because all of them are down.
Okay, fair enough. Bags are coming. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. We'll begin with our formal business for the day, starting with approval of the minutes from last week's meeting. Are there any changes or amendments? Hearing none, the minutes stand approved, and we will proceed with communications from His Honor, the mayor. Madam Clerk, if you could please read 0908 through 0911.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0908, message and order for annual appropriation and tax order for FY2018, filed in the office of the City Clerk on June 19, 2017. Docket number 0909, message and order for annual appropriation for the school department for FY2018, filed in the office of the City Clerk on June 19, 2017. Docket number 0910, message and order approving an appropriation of $40 million to the other post-employment benefit known as OPEB Liability Trust Fund, established under Section 20 of the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 32B, filed in the office of the City Clerk on June 19, 2017. And docket number 0911, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to appropriate the amount of $1 million from the city's capital grant fund in order to increase Boston's Vision Zero Capital Program investment in fiscal year 2018, FY18, to $4.1 million. Excuse me. This funding, which will extend our neighborhood's low-street program as part of the city's comprehensive investment in city street safety, filed in the office of the City Clerk on June 19, 2017.
Councilor Siomo, would you like to comment on the resubmission?
No.
Okay. Dockets numbers 0908 through 0911 represent the administration's resubmitted budget and will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0912, message and order approving a supplemental appropriation of $131,428 to cover the FY17 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Boston and the Boston Police Cadet Association. The terms of the contract are November 14, 2016 through September 30, 2019. The major provisions of the contract include base wage increase of 2% effective the first K-period of January in each fiscal year. The agreement also contains other benefits, including an increase in uniform allowance starting in 2017, filed in the office of the City Clerk on June 19, 2017.
Chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Councilor Siomo.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Ways and Means has held three hearings on collective bargaining agreements since the beginning of this calendar year, and this collective bargaining agreement is substantially the same, following the same policy, language, changes impacting uniform and clothing benefits, and overtime language, and a similar wage increase schedule of 2% per year. There are 40 cadets represented by this collective bargaining unit. The $131,428 for this contract is a supplemental appropriation and will not impact the collective bargaining reserve, so I ask that we suspend the rules in pass today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Siomo. Would anyone else like to comment or ask any questions on this? At this time, Councilor Siomo moves for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0912. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0912 has been passed.
Docket number 0913, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept as a donation of artwork from Citizens Bank to be displayed in City Hall.
In my capacity as chair of the Arts, Culture and Special Events Committee, move for suspension of the rules and passage of this docket as well. This is, this piece of artwork will be a mural depicting Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and the Arts Commission's very excited to be able to accept this. So, all in favor of suspending the rules and passing docket 0913, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0913 has been passed. Reports of public officers and others.
Would you like me to read 0914?
Yes, please, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Docket number 0914, notices received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of May 17, 2017. Docket number 0915, notices received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of May 24, 2017. And docket number 0916, notices received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of June 7, 2017.
Dockets numbers 0914 through 0916 will be placed on file. Matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 0819, order for hearing regarding medically-supervised injection facilities.
Chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health and Recovery, Councilor Nisa Asabi George.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Monday, we held a very robust hearing on docket number 0819, medically-supervised injection facilities. I would like to thank my co-sponsor, Councilor Baker, and my colleagues, Councilor McCarthy, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Zachem, Councilor Jackson, and Councilor Presley for attending. We heard from a number of individuals, including the Mass Medical Society, the Boston, I'm sorry, Boston Healthcare for the Homeless, the Boston Public Health Commission, and a number of advocates and medical professionals, physicians, nurses, pharmacists, all of whom represented both sides of the issue. We also heard from those in active addiction and those living in recovery. It was no doubt a hard conversation, and we all knew it would be. Every person in the room took it personally. How could we not? This epidemic has affected our neighborhoods, our businesses, our friends, and our families. As elected officials, we are entrusted with the responsibility to have hard conversations, to learn more, so that we can do its best for our constituents. I'd like to share some of what I learned. Fentanyl and carfentanil and its presence on our streets mean that people are overdosing faster, dying faster, and have less chances of being revived. That safe injection facilities around the world come in a lot of different models, with a variety, with a wide variety of success and failure. That there is one thing that everyone on both sides of the debate agrees on, we have to do something. I didn't leave that hearing convinced that medically-supervised injection facilities are one of the tools that we need in the city of Boston, but I did leave convinced that we need to learn and do more. As an immediate step, I will continue to advocate at the state level that the municipal voices, that our voices here in Boston are front and center in the conversation about medically-supervised injection facilities. There is no doubt that Boston is part of the conversation as a potential site. I will advocate for prevention in all of our schools and to make sure that treatment is adequate and available when people are ready. I will continue to talk to Seattle, and New York, and Vancouver to learn what they are doing to fight this opioid epidemic, and I will continue to push for us to lead nationally in this work. We know, on average, six people die of accidental overdose every day in Massachusetts. So, throughout the course of our four-hour hearing, somewhere in this Commonwealth, one person had lost their life to this disease. I ask that this matter stay in committee, that these conversations continue as this crisis does, and that we stay thinking about this constantly as we move ahead in our fight to fight for continued recovery. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Asabi George. Councilor Baker, you can proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank Councilor George for having, you know, for finding this was a great discussion. I'm not even close to convinced that these things should actually happen, but, but I think that this is a good way for us to maybe have an ongoing discussion, some sort of a forum, so we can talk about real detox, 30-day detox. We shouldn't be putting anybody in a detox, detox, coming off of heroin or fentanyl, whatever they're coming off. We shouldn't even have a discussion under 30 days. We should be talking about replacement therapy, you know, the main, one of the main points that I took out of this is, is replacement therapy now, people, there's no end game with replacement therapy. I don't necessarily have a problem when someone's coming off of something to use, to use replacement therapy to help them come down, but if, if people that are affected with this disease do not feel the pain that they have to go through to get off those drugs, then they may never get off them. If there's always something else to go to. But in safe injection sites, one of the, one of the data points that we heard is crime doesn't go up in these areas. Well, the areas that we're talking about, possible local... I ask that this matter stay in committee, that these conversations continue as this crisis does, and that we stay thinking about this constantly as we move ahead in our fight to fight for continued recovery. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Sabi George. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank Counsel George for having, you know, for finding this was a great discussion. I'm not even close to convinced that these things should actually happen, but I think that this is a good way for us to maybe have an ongoing discussion, some sort of a forum, so we can talk about real detox, 30-day detox. We shouldn't be putting anybody in a detox, detox coming off of heroin or fentanyl, whatever they're coming off. We shouldn't even have a discussion under 30 days. We should be talking about replacement therapy. You know, the main, one of the main points that I took out of this is replacement therapy. Now, people, there's no end game with replacement therapy. I don't necessarily have a problem when someone's coming off of something to use, to use replacement therapy to help them come down, but if people that are affected with this disease do not feel the pain that they have to go through to get off those drugs, then they may never get off them. There's always something else to go to. But in safe injection sites, one of the data points that we heard is crime doesn't go up in these areas. Well, the areas that we're talking about, possible locations, I don't think that that's an option. That shouldn't be an option, because the place really isn't a very nice place to be, our front door, South Hampton Street corridor. And, you know, maybe we should talk about how, in our discussion, how we get to a point where we can perhaps replace the bridge and come up with real sort of programming over there that's long-term programming, six months, a year, where people are going over there and working on themselves and what's actually going on in their lives for them to want to inject this drug. Safe injection sites are gonna keep people alive, I guess, but those people that are injecting heroin and fentanyl, whatever else in their system, that's no kind of life. I've seen it 100 times, it's no kind of life. So, thank you, thank you, Counsel George, and thank you for the time.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. Docket number 0819 will remain in the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery.
Docket number 0800, message and order authorizing the Department of Neighborhood Development to accept and expend payment of $30 million given to the city of Boston's Inclusionary Development Policy Fund for the purpose of producing and preserving affordable housing in the city of Boston.
Madam Clerk, could you also read the next docket into the record? And we'll speak on both.
Thank you. Docket number 0802, message and order authorizing the Department of Neighborhood Development to apply for, accept, and expend the federal fiscal year 2017 Housing and Community Development Grant to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, known as HUD, in the amount of $24,500,000. The grant will support the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership Program, Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, and the Emergency Solution Grant. Selective read.
Those two are good. So thank you very much. On docket 0800 and 0802, Chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development, Counsel Zachem.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a very informative hearing yesterday on these two dockets. Heard from Chief Dillon and two of her deputy directors over in DND about this nearly $60 million in funding for DND, which I think is incredibly important and timely for us to have right now. The first is the application for the federal grants. I was happy to hear that despite the president's threats and pronouncements out of Washington, this money is still level-funded for the current fiscal year. Unfortunately, DND is planning for some pretty scary scenarios when it comes to funding from HUD and some of these grants next year, but right now, we're in a position to fund them and to make sure that they move forward on so many of the important programs that are helping folks who are dealing with homelessness, families, people who need support services and to get into homes, as far as also homeownership training programs and others, which I think are incredibly important. And I'm excited to get that money as fast as possible into DND's hands and out on the street. Also, the item we're all familiar with, the Inclusionary Development Fund, $30 million to be used to be building and supporting low-income housing across the city of Boston that has come from the development of market-rate housing. Since DND has taken over this program from the BRA, I believe, 2015, 2014, they've made really, I think, great strides in getting this money out into the communities where it's needed most. We discussed potentially in the future, talking about how to use some of these funds to preserve some of the expiring use of affordable units that we have in all of our districts and across the city, you know, housing units that were built 30 or 40 years ago with restrictions placed on them, which back then, 30 or 40 years seemed like a long time. Obviously, 30 or 40 years later, this city is facing thousands of expiring use of affordable units. So I want to commend Chief Dillon and her team for being creative and for really leading the charge on this, and I am fully confident they're gonna put this money where it needs to go when I'm asked for adoption or passage of the two docket. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Zachem. We'll start with a vote on docket 0800. Counsel Zachem moves for acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0800. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0800 has been passed. And on docket 0802, Counsel Zachem moves for acceptance of the committee report and passage. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0802 has been passed.
0801, message and order authorizing the Department of Neighborhood Development to apply for, expend federal FY 17 Continuum of Care Grant Fund, not to exceed $28 million from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to support programs that provide
Chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery, Counsel Sabi George.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Yesterday, we had a brief but productive hearing on docket number 0801, which allows the Department of Neighborhood Development to apply for, accept, and expend up to $28 million in federal funds for the annual Continuum of Care Leadership Council Grant. Over the past several years, the Continuum of Care Leadership Council has used this grant to transform our system and improve services to those that are most vulnerable, in particular, our chronically homeless individuals. They have fostered strong partnerships with providers and improved the quality of data that they are gathering to help improve those services. They have created a front-door triage system that helps prevent homelessness and works to connect individuals to the resources that they need faster. And most importantly, they have helped 1,800 people find permanent supportive housing. Funding from this grant would go to support 34 existing programs, and 94% of the total grant amount will go to support permanent supportive housing. Just last week, the Continuum of Care Leadership Council held a housing surge event. The goal is to help individuals get a housing offer and the service package they need to be successful in that housing. This approach takes what is usually a long and arduous process and shortens it to one day by bringing all of those service providers and clients together in one space. The surge event that happened last week achieved a few important milestones. 63 chronically homeless individuals attended the event, nearly 50%, of who were invited, their biggest event yet. Of those 63, 44 received offers of housing that day from the BHA. They left the event with an address and a new home, and for many of them, the first time in years. Five individuals have BHA offers pending documentation, and nine received tenant-based vouchers from MBHP and are currently engaged in housing search. As the chair of the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery, I am proud to serve on the Continuum of Care Leadership Council and support DND in this amazing work. I ask today that we pass this so that their work continues. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Sabi George. Counsel Sabi George moves for acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0801. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0801 has been passed.
Docket number 0197, order for hearing regarding the annual homelessness.
My understanding is that this hearing did not take place. Counsel, Chairwoman, would you like to comment on?
Just very quickly, this hearing did not take place. We're going to attach it to yesterday's hearing. I'd like it to please remain in committee, and we'll set the date for another time.
Thank you, Counsel Sabi George. Docket 0197 will remain in the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery.
Docket number 0655, message and ordinance to amend the Boston Fire Prevention Code, Article 8, on the regulation for hot work operation.
Chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counsel Flaherty.
Thank you, Madam President. We held a hearing on this yesterday, docket 0655. It was sponsored by Mayor Walsh and referred to the committee back on May the 3rd. It should be noted that the city council passed similar legislation last year that was consistent with the state and national regulations and definitions by replacing provisions of the welding and cutting article with a more inclusive regulation of what's called hot works. This ordinance looks to amend the Boston Fire Prevention Code to clarify several provisions, update some terminology, and ensure consistency with current practices. It was really in our haste to get out to prevent another incident that happened on Beacon Street where we lost two firefighters, Lieutenant Walsh and firefighter Kelly. And so, testifying on behalf of the administration was Connie Wong, Deputy Commissioner of Labor Relations, Human Resources, and Legal Affairs from the Fire Department, as well as Deputy Fire Chief Jack Dempsey, Fire Marshal, also from the Boston Fire Department. And they basically said that what we had passed was great, but in our rush, that there was some inconsistency, some redundancies, some typos, and they also needed to bring about some clarity and some gender corrections. So pretty self-explanatory. In the committee report, they're all outlined specifically, as well as the reasons for them. And at this time, as chair of government operations, I'm moving for docket 0655 to pass. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty moves for acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0655. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0655 has been passed. motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 0917, Council McCarthy offered the following resolution promoting proper disposal of miniature slash nip.
Counsel McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. This is really straightforward. State Representative Randy Hunt, together with a bipartisan group in the state legislatures, have filed a bill that would be a five-cent deposit on nips, as we know it, in and around our neighborhoods. You very rarely can see any cans laying around the neighborhood, but if there is a liquor store and a parking lot nearby, you'll find plenty of nips. So I'm urging us to support this House bill in hopes that we can have people not only make a little income, but clean up our neighborhood in the same way. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Zachem, you have the floor.
I just want to say, please sign my name on as many times as possible on this. This is a huge issue in my neighborhoods, particularly just a few blocks from where I live. We have a liquor store that seems to make quite a bit of their business on nips. Also, on Cambridge Street, the side of Beacon Hill, there's been a Cambridge Street Improvement Committee of the Civic Association there that, as I know Counsel Lamontina knows about, has focused, one of their issues is the proliferation of nips on the street, and I think we should do everything we can to encourage people to do this. Obviously, I think it promotes being positive environmental impact as well as cleanliness in our neighborhood. So please add my name, and I thank you, Counsel McCarthy, for bringing forward.
Thank you, Counsel Zachem. Madam Clerk, could you please add Counsel Zachem's name, add Counsel Lamontina, Counsel Sabi George, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Campbell, Counsel Baker, Counsel Presley, Counsel Flaherty, and Counsel Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Counsel President Wu. I want to thank Counsel McCarthy for bringing forward this important issue. The issue that I do have with this is actually the word nip, which I would like to offer a friendly amendment. That word is an ethnic slur, and the derivative of that word actually comes from World War II, and it actually is analogous to the Jap, which comes from Napan. And I would like for us to make some modifications to this, so we don't actually, even if it is in that bill, that we actually strike that from the language that we use at our council. I contended upon that, I would like to add my name, but I think we do need to be thoughtful about the language that we use in the council.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Brief recess. Any amended language to be considered? We do need everyone to have copies of it, so while our wonderful central staff is editing that and getting a new copy in front of everyone, we'll proceed and just sort of pause on docket 0917 and return to it later.
Docket number 0918, Counsel Zachem offered the following order for hearing regarding healthcare provider parking permit for the city of Boston.
Counsel Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. If I could ask to add Counsel Flaherty's name as a co-sponsor to this.
Any objection? No objection?
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, could you please make sure Counsel Flaherty is added as a co-sponsor?
Thank you, Madam President and Madam Clerk. I just wanted to talk a little bit about this hearing order and why I filed it today is that, you know, representing a lot of our downtown neighborhoods, parking is always a top concern amongst my constituents, and striking that balance between residents who obviously need parking near their homes and service providers, I think particularly healthcare providers, who, as we encourage and we want to see people aging in place, staying in their homes, we've got age-friendly Boston initiatives, we have a great commission for the elderly here in the city, and as we see demographically, we're expecting a dramatic increase in the aging population in the city of Boston over the next five, 10, 15, 20 years. We need to make sure that we're bringing stakeholders together, talk about what the best way is to make sure that healthcare providers are able to serve their clients, to serve their patients in their homes. It's something that, you know, while we want to make sure that there's not abuse of this, and working with the Transportation Department and accreditation agencies and others in the home healthcare space, I think we can craft a solution that's gonna allow for these healthcare providers, many of whom are making very low wages and cannot reasonably afford to pay parking tickets that often are required for them to see their clients, to see their patients, to work with them, and that's what we want to support here and look for a solution. I don't have the solution right now. This is just a hearing order to bring these folks together, to talk about this, to talk about the workers, to talk about their employers, to talk about their clients, and people in our neighborhoods, to figure out what we can do about this. We see more and more, I think, different uses on our curbsides, not just resident parking, not just meters, not just loading zones, but over and over, we need to be thoughtful about this as the city matures and grows and make sure that we are doing the best we can to make sure that these folks who are providing vital services to our friends, our neighbors, our family members, but who, and this is a discussion for another day, are paid incredibly low wages, do not also bear the burden of parking tickets during the course of their work. So I look forward to having a hearing on this and beginning to figure out a solution with the Transportation Department and with others. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Zachem. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to commend the author, thank him for adding my name. It's an issue I deal with across the city, particularly those that have the resident parking requirements, and it's mostly when hospice is in. So when someone's on their last days, and oftentimes, families will call in asking if they could get a placard or if there's some mechanism by which the hospice care provider won't be punished. And again, BTD is just enforcing the rules and regulations. They have no idea whether it's my car or another council's car or someone from hospice, but more often than not, it's the families that end up actually paying the tickets for the hospice provider, because they're miracle workers coming in your home and providing really critical care at the final stages of one's life. So I just happen to agree with the sponsor, that's why I appreciate my name being added, urge others to do the same. There's gotta be a more compassionate way that we as a city can enforce sort of the rules of the road, but have some flexibility built in for people that have healthcare needs as well as hospice needs. So look forward to an expedited hearing, look forward to working with BTD. My staff has been working with BTD, hoping that they can come around and come up with a creative and compassionate solution to address these issues. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Madam Clerk, could you please add Counsel Presley's name? Please add Counsel Lamontina, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Campbell, Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'd just like to commend the maker. Having lived through this with my mother for whatever, 10, 12 years, my father would always pay the tickets, the traffic department handled some of them, but good work. Thank you. And I'd like to.
Madam Clerk, could you please add Counsel Baker's name? Counsel Sabi George, you have the floor.
I too would like to commend the maker and also ask to have my name added. I'd also like to ask the maker if he would consider also inviting to the conversation folks from the Boston Public Schools, as we have a number of itinerant workers that visit multiple schools in a day, providing a variety of services, whether it's speech pathology, occupational and physical therapy, and other services. We also know that many of our schools share school nurses who have to travel from school to school, and in many neighborhoods, they are very crunched, as Counsel Flaherty said, because of the resident parking restrictions. There is also a space on the other side, sort of at the other end of life, on early intervention services, and when those practitioners are visiting homes for children that have also special needs, whether they're born premature and require some therapies, or have some significant developmental delays that need in-home services. So I ask that my name be added. I applaud this work and hope that we could add to the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Sabi George. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Sabi George's name, and Counsel Jackson.
We, many of us sat and listened to teachers, itinerant workers, who are traveling throughout the city of Boston, who I believe having a comprehensive solution would actually be very helpful for. I want to give proper to Counselor Zakam for his leadership in this space. You did it with the Red Sox, and I think there's an important conversation that should happen in how we are a city that's compassionate enough to take care of the 20% of folks who have a disability in the city of Boston, the PCAs that serve them. And if we're really talking about people aging in place, we need to actually have a city that's structured for them to be able to age in place and to live at their homes and have PCAs get there. This also comes up a lot when there's snow, and so I think they're, having a comprehensive conversation is, is really important. In addition, it's essentially, it serves as an additional tax on these families because they're, as Counselor Baker noted, they're, the families are the ones who are actually paying, paying the tickets. So in addition to having to deal with medical bills and the emotional cost of having a loved one who's sick, there's this additional cost that we, this is not the tax revenue that we need. And so I think your leadership here is great. I'd like to have my name added and would also push for a comprehensive conversation about how we can include those teachers who have to move around the city also. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Jackson's name. And docket 0918 will be assigned to the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs. So we have revised copies of the, of docket 0917. Why don't we proceed with docket 0919, give everyone a chance to read through once, and then we'll return to Counselor McCarthy's resolution. So docket 01, 0919, please, Madam Clerk.
Docket 0919, Counsel Flaherty and Counsel Wu will offer the following resolution affirming the goals set forth in Article 2 of the Paris.
Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As the council knows, both Counsel President Wu and I have sponsored a hearing that's scheduled for this Friday to discuss steps that we can take to Green City Hall as well as other municipal buildings. So continuing in our collective efforts, also recognizing and building on the great work that our colleague, City Council Madam O'Malley, has done, I guess, in this space, keeping our focus on environmental concerns. Counsel Wu and I today are sponsoring a resolution for a vote affirming the goals set forth in Article 2 of the Paris Agreement. And this resolution will signal to our residents that we're taking their concerns seriously, that this body is committed to protecting our oceans, our beaches, our rivers, and our air, make sure that it's safe and clean and healthy. Both Governor Baker and our mayor, Mayor Walsh, have outlined their emission reduction goals, which are very ambitious and aggressive. And so I feel that, you know, we, we can't make progress unless everyone's working together on this. We need cooperation of other cities and municipalities as well as our partners at the state level. So I'd like to take the opportunity to commend, I got a crack of Jack staff, particularly our newest intern, Dylan Elliott Hart, as well as Steve Harvey for their efforts, along with Michelle from Central Staff for sort of crafting this. But we'll turn it over to Madam Chair if she has anything to add, but would be willing to move for a suspension and adoption to get this up to Beacon. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. You said it all. I'll just say thank you for your leadership on this. And Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to commend the makers and particularly want to thank the great partnership we've formed on so many environmental initiatives. I think I mentioned last week, shortly after the President pulled out of the Paris Accord, he was quoted in saying, I'm paraphrasing here, that I was elected, he was elected to represent the people of Pittsburgh, not Paris, while shortly thereafter, the mayor of Paris put out a joint statement with the mayor of Pittsburgh, saying, "We're going to come to this on our own." So really commend yourself, Madam President, Counsel Flaherty, for the leadership on this, wholeheartedly support it. This is just one part of the puzzle that cities really need to lead on, and I know we're going to continue to work on the plastic bag elimination ordinance, on community choice energy. There's a terrific hearing on Friday, urge you all to attend, or tomorrow, Friday, Friday, urge you all to attend on this and figuring out how we can really get to net zero carbon in our buildings. So in, I never got a chance to say it, but on Counselor McCarthy's early initiative as well, thank you for that, obviously. I want to add my name when we get to that because that's another tremendous way. The big five for litter are those smaller alcohol bottles, plastic bags, lottery tickets, cigarette butts, and Styrofoam cups. So we're going to tackle them one by one. So thank you again and look forward to passage of this very, very important resolution.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Madam Clerk, please add Counsel O'Malley's name. Please add Counsel Presley's name, Counsel Zakam, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel Lamontina, Counsel Jackson, Counsel Sabby George, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Campbell, Counsel Baker. At this time, Counselor Flaherty. I'm on the floor. At this time, Counsel Flaherty moves for suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0919. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0919 has been adopted. So unless there's objection, I will move us back to docket 0917 to resume, and I believe there may be a motion to introduce amended language, but I will turn it over to Counsel McCarthy, the sponsor, to comment.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Yes, there seems to be, you know, a person outside this room who was not happy with the word nips, but, and so I was, were able to change it. But I do want to recognize the definition of nip, just so that person can have this information. Nip is a noun. It's a small measure of spirits dating back to 1796. It's a shortening of nipper can or quality of liquor of half pint or less, meaning they take a nip of the alcohol and put it into a smaller container. So there was no, you know, evil thoughts behind the thing, but we changed it. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel McCarthy moves for a substitution of language. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Okay, so we will be speaking on the substituted language. I know Counsel O'Malley, you had your light on before. Did you like to comment more? Okay. And Madam Clerk, you got Counsel O'Malley as a sign on. Please add Counsel Jackson's name as well. And Counsel Siomo and Counsel Baker for good measure, in case they don't remember who signed on the first round. Are we good? Okay. And I will just say, you know, we're not clear what the different etymology of different words are, but I appreciate everyone's patience and the fact that if any word is, you know, signaling harsh intent or, or something that we don't mean to anyone, I appreciate us taking the time to, to address it and change it. Oh yes, please add the Chair's name as well. Thanks. So Counselor McCarthy moves for suspension of the rules and adoption of the new language for docket 0917. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 0917 has been adopted in, in its amended form. Personnel orders, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0920, Counsel Wu offered the following order.
Chair moves for suspension and passage of docket 0920. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 0920 has been passed. There are no late filed matters to add to the agenda for either the formal agenda or the consent agenda, so I will pause to see if anyone would like to pull a matter from the green sheets. Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to pull from the green sheets on page 2 of 11, docket number 0696.
Thank you. I'll read that.
Yes, please, Madam Clerk.
In the Committee on Environment and Sustainability, docket number 0696, sponsored by Mayor Walsh, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and extend a grant of $33,931 awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue to be administered by the Environment Department for the Climate Ready Boston Community Leader Program. It was referred to committee on May 10, 2017.
Counsel O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam President. In lieu of a hearing, since this is a relatively speaking smaller amount of money, it's about $34,000, I'd like to suspend the rules and pass it today. It's a grant for the Climate Ready Boston Community Leader Program. This is something our Environment and Energy Department has been working to gather information, to help educate the public on, as I often say, the sound environmental policies that are often almost always better for the ratepayer as well. As I said, $33,931. It will be spent thusly, $20,375 will be spent on organizers as well as translation services in Spanish, French and Creole, Portuguese, Cantonese and Taiwanese and Vietnamese, stipends for our community leaders. There will also be a smaller amount of that, or in addition to that, $1,250 on outreach materials such as toolkits and translation services, and then advertising will be $10,056 on Facebook ads, MBTA ads, newspaper ads, as well as independent news website. It will help our friends up in the Energy and Environment Department do their job of talking about the climate ready program and empowering our, our community leaders for a small stipend and really doing some very, very important work. So I ask that we can pull this from the green sheets and pass it today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counsel Presley, I see your light is on. Is it for a different matter or for, on this one? Okay. Would anyone else like to comment on docket 0696? Okay, at this time, Counsel O'Malley, as Chair of the Committee on Environment and Sustainability, has pulled docket 0696 from the green sheets and is on the floor, and he moves for passage docket 0696. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0696 has been passed. Counsel Presley, you have the floor.
I would like to pull docket number 0414 from page 4 of 11 of the green sheet.
Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0414 into the record?
In the Committee of Healthy Women, Families and Communities, docket number 0414, sponsored by the mayor, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand a grant of $400,000 to various donors, from various donors. The grant will fund programmatic initiatives, including the immigrant integration and empowerment of English for new Bostonians and public events, including Citizenship Day.
Counsel Presley, you have the floor on docket 0414.
Thank you, Madam President and Madam Clerk. I move to suspend the rules and accept and expend this grant for the Office of Immigrant Advancement. I had hoped to have a hearing to further illuminate the good work happening in that office, but we just simply couldn't get a date together and then that they need these funds. Now I move to suspend the rules, accept and expend this grant as the Chair of the Committee to support this in the matter of $400,000. This money will be used to support the Immigrant Integration and Empowerment Initiative, which enables outreach workers to go out into immigrant communities, to listen, to learn, and to make sure that we are meeting the specific and unique concerns of immigrant communities. This money also supports English for new Bostonians, which helps immigrants to feel at home and to continue to integrate and to navigate the city, and allows us to also increase the capacity of the number of existing ESL services while also strengthening the quality. And of course, this grant will continue to financially support the, the awesome day that is Citizenship Day in the city. If you've never been, it's a fantastic event. And so again, I move, very emotional, I move to suspend the rules and accept and expend this grant today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Counsel Presley moves, has pulled, in her capacity as Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families and Communities, has pulled docket 0414 from the green sheets before the council, and she moves for passage of this docket. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0414 has been passed. Would anyone else like to pull a matter? Nope? Okay. We will pause then for any statements or announcements to the group? Seeing and hearing none? Oh. At this time, I'd like to ask all counselors and guests to please rise. Today, the council will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counsel Baker, Maria Antonia Vega, mother of our friend Flavio from the Office of Neighborhood Services. For Counsel Flaherty, Michelle Haynes. For Counsel Sabby George, Evelyn Leahy. For Counsel Lamontina, Edward Contilli, former Boston police officer. Patricia S. Maisie Hagerty. And Peter J. Limone. For Counsel McCarthy, Professor Rick Feinecke. Antonio Chilo. And Mary A. Maki. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, we do so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We're scheduled to meet again Wednesday, June 28 at 12 noon. All in favor of adjournment say aye. Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Council is adjourned.